Move on to the second public hearing of the night, which is, I think, is the reason why we have many people in attendance. It's a public hearing on a petition to amend the zoning code of the town of Canandaigua for 3907 County Road 16, Canandaigua, from Residential Lake District, RLD, to Incentive Zoning, IZ. And I will add that there is no resolution on tonight's agenda pertaining to this public hearing. So this is the first of public hearings that we will have on this process. So at this time, I'll declare the public hearing open. And like anyone to be heard at this time would like to speak on the topic. If you could state your name.
Hi, I'm Kathy Foster. I live at 4065 Ana Linda. I'm one of, if not the closest resident to the southernmost portion of the land that they're trying to develop. So I have a bunch of concerns. I'm, um, I went over all the stuff that you guys put out on the newsletter and listened to the meeting and all that stuff. And so some of the things that I have concerns are as follows. The lodge is being proposed at the southernmost end of that property, which puts it right next to my property. RSM is between us. It's not developed yet, so I'm the first property that has residents on it. I would like to propose a thought that perhaps they would move it into the middle, if they are approved to even do it, of the, um, the resident, the, what are they called? The luxurious residences that they're going to rent. And then perhaps put landscaping around it to muffle sounds and light, so that it keeps it away from the year-round folks that are on either end of that property. I'm concerned if it does get approved for the incentivized redistricting or whatever the matter is. Yes, that RSM will come back to you and say, I'll put an ice cream stand on the lake property that we're trying to develop. And we'd like to also do all of this stuff and get our 16 boat slips and all the other stuff that they tried to do. And so I think it will be hard if you say yes to all the stuff that they're proposing, that they don't come back and do it, and that's even closer to my property. Currently, that is a very crowded lakefront. When you try to get gas there, there's lines on both ends and there's no markings, there's no channels like the north end has. And so people fly out of there. It causes a lot of wave action. On my prep, my waterfront, it comes up and over my break wall. My grandkids can't swim because it smacks them in the face. And it's, it sounds ridiculous, but it, this is a small lake and there's a lot of boats on it. And when people are that close dipping in and out without a channel, it's really not good. I think there needs to be a marked channel to go straight out into the lake if it gets approved. I'm concerned about, even if we get rid of all the boats that are on the side currently, which is a problem, especially during the summer with traffic, boats that are parked there and then people coming and going to try to access the resources of the marina, that even if they're being placed up on the hill, that the construction vehicles that will be necessary for God only knows how many years to do all the things that they're proposing is going to be possibly worse than the boats on the side of the road. I'm not really against all the things that they want to do, but it's just kind of a large impact in that area. And in the recordings that they, that you guys had at the meeting, it talked about that they were very conscious of permeability and sewers and all that. But currently, on the front of their property, on the bottom of the hill, there's a giant pipe that when it rains, it comes out gushing, goes right into West Lake and goes right into the lake. And it's just an environmental mess. So those are my points. I hope you guys listen to everybody's, okay?
Okay, thank you very much. Now, before we move on, we do have, and this, I was just informing of this, we do have a presentation as a quick overview by Mr. Brew, who is here to give a presentation about the project. And I just want to, just to help clarify the process and what is, what will happen with this, with the whole process as we go forward. So as part of incentive zoning, if the town decides to grant incentive zoning, which is a change in zoning for a certain area, that we give it a special, a special zoning permission, permissible use. There are amenities that the town can then request that will be, would be a benefit to the residents of the town. So it's an exchange for this incentive. The request is amenities coming back for the benefit to improve life for whatever we might ask for the populace and the residents of the town of Canandaigua. I also need to clarify too, that there has been no decision made by the board at all regarding this property. Anybody who might say that they, that they, that the board has come up with a decision one way or another is misguided, and that would be improper to say that. And I'd also encourage all board members to again, realize that we're in the initial stages of this, of this project. And we need to take into account all voices, all comments on it before, you know, we all have our personal opinions, but before sharing that, so we can hear what other people have to say in regard to the project. Those in favor of and those against it, because everybody has the right to be heard. And know that we haven't, there's been no decision made at all going forward. This is going to be, this will be a lengthy process as we go through it, fine tuning the details. So with that said, I'll turn the time over to Mr. Brew from German Brothers Marina to give a brief overview of the project. And then we'll go back to the public hearing portion of the comments. So, Mr. Brew.
Thank you for having me. I'm going to start by doing a quick little recap of what happened at the last meeting to kind of catch everybody up on the proposal in general. And then the board had some questions that they sent us back to do some more research with. And then I'll get to answering those questions. And then there's some frequently asked questions from the people that have come to the dock or come into the marina that I'll hit those also in the presentation. So first slide, please. So just some brief context to the geography of the project. You probably, we all know this, but maybe you don't. This is the marina, this is the RSM development project that's behind the marina. The marina project has nothing to do with any of the RSM property, nor does it have anything to do with the property to the south. I think it's called the Johnson House that was recently demolished. So again, just some physical context to clarify that. Next slide, please. So this is just the current state of the marina. I do hear from people that they're calling my baby ugly. I love the marina. I think it's beautiful, but there are some unsightly pieces to it. The boats on the road, boats on the hill. They're may not be as attractive to everybody as it is to me, but I, I think the proposal for what we have putting forward here would make West Lake Road significantly more attractive. As the supervisor mentioned, German Brothers Marina provides or proposes amenities to the town in hopes for exchange for the change in zoning. So some of the proposals, the amenities that we have proposed is, the first thing is safety along West Lake Road. I have kind of looked through Facebook, so I do get a sense for some of the comments that people have. So I just want to address some of those things that I have heard. A lot of people say, where's the parking going to be? And a lot of people today, there's parking only on West Lake Road, but there's going to be 115 parking spaces that are going to be up where the boats are today. So there'll be significantly less congestion on West Lake Road parking, specifically on the east side, the lake side of the road. There'll be no parking at all, and that will be what's called an active shoulder that'll allow for walkers and bikers to safely traverse the marina property. We got that one. Okay, next slide, please. There will be public access for, for the public, access for the public, I should say. At the moment, it's at the north end of the marina, and that would be not for motorized boats to access the lake, but for kayaks and stand-up paddles to be able to launch. You could fish. There's no swimming at that location. You can, there'll be picnic tables for the people to just generally enjoy the lake. So that's, it's a significant piece that the marina is offering is, that's, as you can imagine, the lakefront property is pretty valuable. So that's one of the big pieces that we're proposing. There's something new to me, the Canandaigua Water Trail. I don't know if anyone's heard of that, but there's little stops along the lake for the kayakers and boarders that this will now be a stop on that water trail, which I think is wonderful. And there will be public slips for the public who want to tie up here. They would be transient slips to, for whatever reason they wanted to tie up, but they wouldn't be like a season-long type slip. Next slide, please.
Peter, could you hold the mic a little closer?
Oh, sorry. Okay. I thought I was too loud. Talked a little bit about parking. There's 115 parking spaces total. There'll be 10 here in the public. 11, those are 100 and 100 spaces in the yellow that'll be available for the marina customers. And there'll be five handicap accessible spaces throughout the marina. Very quickly, last, not last Sunday, Sunday of Labor Day weekend, it was about the busiest I've ever seen it. And I counted the cars that were parked at the marina. And the cars that I counted included all the cars that were parked upland, down the road, both sides. And that they were way down here towards the Johnson House. And there were 73 cars on pretty much the busiest day of the year. So that still leaves 40-somethings spaces that are open. Admittedly, we didn't have a restaurant there at the time. And and we didn't have the cottages at the top. So that would certainly add to the traffic. But still had 40, 40 open spaces, I thought was pretty good. So that would, on almost every day of the year, our proposed parking would easily handle what's currently coming today. Next slide, please. Public restrooms that would be available 24/7. We'd have accessibility places for the handicap to park and to access the amenities. Picnic areas, I mentioned, that would be on the water. And we're trying to design in some that are across West Lake Road that are elevated a little bit, so you could get a better view if you wanted. And trails, there are some trails that I think are proposed through RSM at the top here. So we would provide some trail connectors for people who wanted to exercise and benefit from trail access. Next slide, please. So what does German Brothers Marina want in exchange for this proposed amenities? We jumped a couple of slides. One more. Perfect. So we would like to be able to add units, dwelling units, rental cottages, elegant cottages, we've been calling them. Ms. Foster, where it will be moved to the center. That, we had heard that somewhere else before and totally understand and agree. And so you get the benefit of me having heard your comments. And landscaping for sure. It's not my intention, and I realize I don't, I mean, I don't own it forever. Well, I definitely won't own it forever. But it's not, it's not going to be a, not intended to be a party house. It's intended for, like I've had customers, marina customers come to me today and say, they would have business meetings there, bringing out-of-town executives to stay in the units and have business meetings there. Again, it's not my intention to, for it to be a party house, but I certainly could see family birthdays and anniversaries, that kind of thing. I have some other answers to some of your other questions real quick while I was on yours. The water drain, that huge pipe. One of the things that we will be addressing is the rainwater runoff. I've never learned so much about runoff. And the plan is to have an underground tank that captures that, lets the dirty water drift to the bottom and then clean water goes off into the lake. So I do think that would be a benefit environmentally. I don't have an answer for the construction vehicles. I'm going to get to the crowded gas thing for you. And, okay. So eight lodging units across the top. The property would be divided up into three separate lots. And that's, they would be 250 feet of frontage. That's what all these red lines are down here is, that's a lot, that's a 45-foot setback here. That's for the docks. As you may know, that the UDML, University Dock, Universal Dock and Mooring Law allows 50 slips per 250 feet of frontage. So we would be having three lots closer still, sorry. I feel like I'm very loud, so, okay, I'm sorry. So there would be three lots of 250 feet of frontage each. And we would be asking for it to be used for commercial purposes. Today, it's in the Residential Lake District, so we'd like it to be commercial to do such things as boat rentals, food and beverage, and lodge rental, things we can't do today. And the last thing is to be designate, designated a tier-two marina for the universal dock and mooring law. And that, as I mentioned, would allow us to have 50 slips for 250 feet of frontage. And that's, as I interpret it, that is what, there's no variance request there, that is what tier-two, we would be clearly tier-two by the definition. Next slide. So benefits to the community. I mentioned some of the sustainability, the environmental, public lake access. The boats and trailers that are stored there today would be taken off-site. This is a little subtle thing that people probably don't know, even if they read the plan. We store hundreds of boats and hundreds of them come from other lakes. And today, when we service them for winter storage, we come, we go to get them from Binghamton and Thousand Islands, and they all come down West Lake Road and they all go down the ramp, and then they all go out to storage. The proposal is that our, all that service would go to the North Road location. And all those boats today that travel down and back North Lake, West Lake Road will not have to come down to the lake. So there'll be significantly less load on West Lake Road because we don't have all those boats and trailers coming down. That's, again, is a subtle thing that. So these boats that I'm referring to are, are on other lakes that we bring in for storage. The North Road facility will have a test tank. So they won't need to come and go down the ramp into the lake, which is also beneficial to the lake, is that you have less boats that are pumping stuff into the lake. So that, that load of those, there's a couple hundred every year that come from other lakes. But less load on the lake, less load on the road.
So Peter, just to interrupt you, make sure that, I'd love to have every question answered, but it can't turn into a, like a question-answer session.
Fair enough.
We'd be here, great questions, but we'd be here for, until tomorrow.
Okay, next slide, please. I think I've addressed most of these things, so we can. So I'm jumping now to some of the questions that the board asked me to go back and get some specificity on. So I do want to, there's a little difference between slips and boats, which is, how many, how many slips are we going to have? We're going to have 100 and, we're asking for 150 slips. That's here, 150 slips. We, they also asked for how many slips are at other marinas. You can see at Canandaigua Boat Works, which is on the east side, there's 62, 194 at Sutter's, 82 at Sager's and 76 at Smith Boys. One of the things we wanted to look at was the congestion. And we decided to say, well, how many slips per 100 feet of frontage do they have? So Pelican Point, Canandaigua Boat Works, they have 100 feet of frontage and they have 60 slips on there. So that's obviously 60 boats per 100. But if you go down Sutter's and Sager's, they're both about 40. In our proposal, we're going to have 19 boats per 100 feet of frontage, by far the least congested marina on the lake. So you got to put some context around the 150, that does sound like a lot. But compared to, it's not even the most on the lake at, Sutter's has 194. So it won't even be close. So this is boats on the lake, which is a little different than the slips. Today, this was, this is today and this is proposed. So today, we have 33 slips. We have three slips at the property that's at the, the north that we had purchased, one slip to the property at the south. Today, we have eight rentals that we currently store on the land that would eventually go in the water. And we have 35 moorings. So that adds up to 150 boats that is, that the marina kind of puts on the lake on a regular basis. We're proposing 50 slips for each one of these properties. The rentals would go into a slip. So that's one of the differences between a slip and a boat, because now the rentals are in a slip. And a reduction in the moorings to 24 and a reduction of our dry store to 30. So that's 204. That's, so that would be a net increase of 54 boats on the lake. I do think a lot of people hear 150 slips and they're thinking 150 new boats, holy mackerel. It's not 150 new boats. Next slide, please. So as I thought about it, the 54 boats that would be at German Brothers Marina after this proposal, if it was to be developed, those boats are not going to be coming from Buffalo and Syracuse. Those boats are already on the lake. There are people who currently go down the boat ramp at the public launch today, and they're tired of being at the public boat launch. So you're going to have those boats at the marina, which is going to be less congestion and frustration. I don't know if anyone's been to the public boat launch, but it gets hairy there, right? So it can get physical. So you'll have little or no increased load on the lake because all those boats are already on the lake. Less congestion, better parking at the boat ramp, reduce traffic at that 5:20 and 3:32. You sit at that traffic light on a busy weekend day, there are just boats and trailers going all over the place. And to me, the scariest one is the people that park across from the boat ramp, that park in that old Wegmans parking lot, and they run across the road to get back to the boat launch. You have people running across there all the time. So I do think it would be significantly safer in that whole area because, and not an increased load on the lake, because those boats are in, at the marina.
So Peter, can I get you to, because I know a lot of this depends on application for the UDML and application for those changes. Can I get you to focus in on the amenities that you're, that you are, because we're looking at values as well, the amenities that were offered up to the town in exchange for the incentives that you're, that you're asking for. So, so we can kind of get a balance of that. So what does the incentive do for the marina? And how does it help the marina's bottom line? And then what is the value that you're placing on the amenities that you are offering up at the town so far, if you have that information?
Mr. Supervisor, I think according to code, as I said at the last meeting, those need to be submitted in writing with an actual spreadsheet.
So do you have that?
It's my understanding that we, the, the value of the things that we're proposing are in our application, the very initial application.
Yeah, and it's as a lump sum, and our code requires it broken out. You know, we would like, we're offering a public bathroom. The value of the public bathroom is this much.
Okay.
Construction costs.
It also needs the value of their benefits.
Yep, that's exactly what I just said.
So can you, is that something you can get?
The the return that the, the marina gets, frankly, is my business.
Okay.
That's not for.
All right. Okay, so hold, hold on. So we'll need, and that's a discussion that we'll have to, I'll have to have you outline, because those are, if that's in code, and you're saying that's in code, that we need to know the benefit. So.
The benefit you're receiving, I'm fine with.
Right.
But for me to disclose to the public what my financials are is not acceptable.
Can you clarify that from?
Then I guess you would have to make an application for the town board to amend its town code that's been in existence for quite a long time. It's also based in New York State law.
Okay.
You can either.
Then I guess we're done.
Required by code, like I said last month, or you don't.
Okay, guess we're done. Because I'm not going to disclose my financials to the board. Thank you.
All right. Okay, with that, is there anyone else would like to be heard as part of the public hearing tonight? Okay. Ms. Kathy, you get to come up and say your name again. It's a new clerk.
Karen and Kathy. West Lake Road. After talking to several people with the town, it's my understanding that the application hasn't really even been submitted yet because it's not complete, that it would need to have a diagram that showed all the boat slips and so on that were proposed. Incentive zoning in itself does require not only monetizing what the benefit is to the town, but what the benefit in dollar amount is to the applicant. So I think that's what everybody's talking about the last few minutes. The other thing I'd like to just throw out there is, should this ever, and it's going to be years before this ever gets done, let's put that right out there because it's going to take several changes of law and everything else. Should this ever get done, the three tiers that are possible for that property are tier-one, which would be residential, tier-two, which is what they're proposing, which is for a non-transitory marina, and tier-three, which is for transitory uses. And I contend that there are, they're proposing more transient uses here than they are non-transient uses. Most of the non-transient uses, which would be the marina, the boat repairs and the boat storage are going, are proposed to go away from there and go up to North Road. So those go away. What comes in is transient Airbnb-type properties, transient restaurant. And I don't know how you determine what the primary use of a property is, but if the primary use is determined by land coverage, lake lot coverage, certainly the transient uses are going to cover a significant more, a significantly greater amount of the land than the non-transient uses. And tier-three is intended for transient uses. Besides those transient uses, they've talked about the whoopee 10 boat slips for the town, and those are transient. And I think the other things that are of concern are the fact that they've offered a 30-year lease to the town, but the benefits that they would be receiving or the incentives that they would be receiving are forever. And the benefits that the town gets, they're proposing be for 30 years. That's not acceptable. Both have to be, if anything occurs, both of those have to be permanent. So if you're going to offer something to the town, it has to be forever. And I think tier-three is more appropriate. And I believe it's hard to know what the actual count will be for boats because they haven't. Because they haven't provided even a map that shows exactly what the lineal frontage is, what that number really is. It's somewhere around seven sixty to eight sixty. But nobody's quite sure on what that is. But if they haven't provided that, it's hard to calculate the number of boats that are allowed by the code, by the U D M L. But best I can guess is with tier two, there would be eighty-eight boats allowed, eighty-eight slips, no moorings. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Consider tier three.
All right. Not exactly sure where it stands right now, Peter, but given your abrupt cessation of talking, but. It's not up to you to decide what the amenities are up to the town to negotiate with you amenity. What you're offering may not be what we want. And we do have to have some idea of value, how that calculated beyond me.
I'm fine with dying to propose the amenities.
I'm just, I'm just saying that you don't tell us what we're going to get.
I don't. The, the law is written that I propose and you get to decide.
I think you're both right. I think you're both saying the same thing in a different way. Nothing will tell you. I don't think you need to provide income and expenses. But under New York State laws, there, a town cannot make an incentive zoning district without a value on the amenity and the incentive. If somebody told you differently, they were lying or wrong. It's in New York State town law, it would be a constitutional issue. The town can't essentially give a present without knowing what, what they're getting.
What we're getting is fine. So when asking a private company to disclose his financials is.
But I think if I can clarify with that, what I'm kind of, kind of understanding is it's not the full financials, it's the value of this. It's, it's the value of this piece. It's the value of these hundred and fifty boat slips would provide this much. Fifty boat slips would provide this, one hundred and fifty would provide this much more revenue, which makes the business this much more feasible. And here's the value of what the town is requesting from us. Am I correct?
I think that that would be your decision as to.
But I mean, is that like a layman's understanding? Okay.
And a next, and a justification and backup for the value.
Okay.
Does that include labor to man the facility, annual maintenance for the docks? More than three facilities that, I mean, that's going to get pretty extensive.
If you want to get the best way to persuade.
So you're getting revenue and income.
All right, anyone else like to be heard?
My name's Hugh Hamlin, I live at thirty-eight, forty-one County Road sixteen. And I guess I have more questions than statements, but my primary concern is the impact on, on the lake, which is a beautiful natural resource. But I guess I just kind of wonder what the process is and what the incentive is relative to subdividing this property into, into three divisions. I, I don't see the advantage to town to doing that. It sounds like it's purely an advantage to the developer. They have more dockage. So I think I kind of overheard in the last meeting, which we listened into, that there's a little pressure to get this zoning approval so they could start construction on the docks perhaps as early as February. So I guess one of my questions is, what is the process with zoning? What's the timeline with respect to a decision on this subdivision?
I will, I will make note of those and we can decide as a board to answer those at the end. So what I will do is I will, I'm making a note and I will go through the process at the end. Process, potential timeline, how things are going to spec out. Okay?
Okay, great, thank you. I just think it's a big decision. It shouldn't be accelerated.
Likewise, okay. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard this time? Any hands online? Fifty. Hey Linda.
Nope, she was just waiting.
Were you waving or were you, was that a?
No, I'd like to, I'd like to be heard. Linda, where's that on County Road sixteen? I drove along there for a long time and most of my neighbors were very upset about all the boats that were parked along the road because as people walk between them, they're very hard to see. And so for me, I listened to this presentation and hear a lot of really good things that could happen. And I, I didn't understand the number of the boats until I listened today. So that was really helpful to understand that. But I also feel like a public restroom around, along there would be unbelievable. Because I used to live on Hill, Hillcrest Drive and we had a pump station down at the bottom of the, of all the street. And people would poop behind there because they were out on their bike ride and they didn't have anywhere to use a restroom for quite a while. We'd always have people pooping there and it was disgusting. So from my perspective, I love the amenity of a public restroom. And I, I feel like this, this proposal makes a lot of good, really good points. Thank you.
Thank you. And for everybody in the audience, that is against town code. Yeah, that's against town code. All right, before we come back, is there anyone else who has not had the chance to speak, would like to be heard? Sir?
My name's Joel Hockman. I live at forty-four, eleven County Road sixteen. I understand what you're trying to do is find out the value of what they're getting in return. But my question, and I kind of talked out loud, is how do you value a public bathroom? How do you value less parking and congestion on the road? If they, now, it's over the last couple of years since they've taken over, it's gotten better. It was horrible. Now it's still not great. But how do you, how do you value that? And maybe that's part of the problem you're having is you don't know how to value it. I mean, to us who drive that road, because I lived, you know, almost foster every day. And I know the problem with the pedestrians and the bicycles, especially the dog walkers on Saturday and Sunday. It's like an obstacle course. We all know that. So, you know, if they truly are going to do what they say, which is a great benefit, not only cost, but safety-wise, how do you value that? And I think it's your job, you know, with question marks of what that true value is. The other thing is, you know, what they're trying to do is improve the experience on the lake. For a while there, if you're a boater, you know, you had one option at the north end of the lake. Now we're lucky at the north end of the lake, there's two options to tie up and have a lunch. Now there's maybe another one. You know, it's all about, you know, you go down to the two hotels now. And we were sitting there at dinner, all the, we hear the people, they're coming from Buffalo, they're coming from other places. They're coming here as a tourist destination. What is the value of your increased sales tax and revenue to the county? Not to mention the real estate taxes that this guy, I mean, we're all paying real estate taxes and they're up through the roof. They're going to be putting in millions of dollars and I'm sure they're going, you're going to get a piece of their hide. You know, these are all improvements, you know, to take these, what, forty, fifty-year-old buildings and improve upon them? What's the value of that? I mean, you go up and down the lake, all the old cottages are being restored. You know, not necessarily torn down, but they're being improved. And that's what we want to continue to do with our community, is to improve our community. And I believe this is going to be a giant step to improving the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, is there anyone else? Oh, we'll go here and then we'll go here. Don't forget, remind me, make sure I come back to you.
So Doug, can you get to a certain slide, part of this presentation? It's under the core principles of German Brothers Marina? One above that twenty-three? So since we started this project, there's been some level of confusion between.
Greg, can I, Greg, can you say your name for the?
Sorry, Greg Westbrook, four oh nine six, Anna Linda Drive. Thank you. So there's been a lot of questions about how we get at that number, as Joe referred to. And what I asked for in the fourth item there is partner focus. It's a very simple sentence. Both G B M and the town must have, share a common language and understanding of the process to establish for both the amenities and the incentives attached to this project. I think Terry, that kind of gets at what you were talking about, right? So I, I'm confident that when we find that way, you know, this would be a tremendous improvement. Obviously, I'm biased. I'm part of that team. And so I want to acknowledge that also. But I really believe that this is an answer that has been long in coming. I want to take you back a couple of years. Tichner, never got it, guys. R S M, never got. And we're providing a, a significant improvement with access to one of the most expensive lakes there is. And that's going to be hard to put a value on too, that one, right? So I would suggest that possibly myself and Peter and others might come together and brainstorm around this over the next week. And, but I for one, I respect Peter completely. He's absolutely right. You do not share your private financials with anybody except for the I R S, right? And, and that's the way businesses run. So there has to be a process somewhere out there that will allow us to validate for both the amenities and the incentives. Right? So the value of that incentive that we get is a result of providing that amenity. And there, there must be a process out there that we have to go find as, as mutual partners here, partners here that allow us to continue this conversation. I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Bob Pierce. I live at one Spyglass Hill. The thing that you spoke, you spoke about all the different benefits. And I thought that that was a great list. And the thing I thought of was that little extra amount of public access seemed like a really good thing on a lake this big, with so much private property. To have regular people who don't have a lakeside house, they would go and sit by the lake, play on their kayak. That kind of thing just seems like a real benefit. It may be, I don't know, fifty, sixty feet, but it's a spot on the lake for people to come. And I think that's a benefit we need to include as well. Thanks.
Thank you very much. All right. Let's go scanning. I'll slowly, slowly see. I don't see any other hands, so.
I'm in Boxer forty-sixty-five, Anna Linda. I guess the only thing I really wanted to kind of bring a little bit of a point to was that when you were showing the number of boat slips and comparing that like it wasn't a big deal that you were going to have a hundred and fifty of them when Sutter's has a hundred and whatever. The difference is that Sutter's isn't near any residential locations. It's all commercial at that end and it won't impact people that are trying to sit on their front and swim or hang out with their grandkids with the waves and, you know, people zipping in and out. It's, there's channels and there's commercial. And that's a really big difference. Well, that's all, that's like a cluster of condos. And it's also, it's also an odd kind of a little peninsula that kind of sticks out there too, which actually provides a little bit of a barrier, a buffer. So there, there's, there is a difference.
So the dock layout, which is an eventual lead slide, it does funnel traffic much differently than it does today.
Okay, that would be great. It would be nice to actually understand that and see that.
So how do, how do you value when there's blue green algae and nobody puts their boat in that summer? How do you value an ice storm that takes out my docks? So I don't know how you put numbers on what is, what is going to be my occupancy rate? What's your assumption for that? I, I have no idea how, it's, it's not like the only incentive zoning application you've had, which was, I think, forty houses. Those houses are going to get sold. So it's easy to put a number on that. I have a tremendous number of variables and a tremendous amount of risk that I don't even know how you put a price on.
But you're the one who wants the incentive to do this. So it runs the onus on you.
Obviously, yeah, I've made my proposal.
Doug, there are two ways that we value commercial property. We've talked about that. Could you?
There's absolutely factors for vacancy. Not what I meant.
Yeah, we've, we've had a, just an internal conversation, just to try to help make sure that both parties get to a spot. You know, our assessor actually does a really good job. Has quite a bit of experience in determining the value of non-residential parcels. And, you know, another way to do that, there's any number of different ways to do it, as Chris was just alluding to. And there's all kinds of different things you can look at. But, you know, another way might be to do it to look at what the future assessed value might be. That way, at least you have a baseline and our assessor could absolutely do something like that once we have all of the information. As has been said, and, and you know, if we were, if we had to do a determination right now, we probably should, Chris. But, you know, it is still an incomplete application. We still need more information to complete our review of the application. But that is, there's plenty of time that, you know, to have those conversations with the applicant and to find a solution on maybe a way to help add, putting some values together for, for both.
When will we get a complete application?
I guess I need to know more about what your expectations are of my financials. Because I don't think it's appropriate for you to know my financials.
For the application for change.
I guess it was potentially a moot point.
Why don't you continue the public hearing in close time? So, so with that, I mean, I think we're getting lost in the whole financial disclosure discussion as part of this. Not yet. But so let's back up to the, we need to, there needs to be an application of exactly what you are requesting. What, whether it would be the buildings up on top, the lot line adjustments, the layout of if you're requesting tier, if you're requesting the maximum tier, what that would look like. So then that decision can be made, so then that can move forward with that. So those steps need to be, need to be done. I was looking at one of them and it looked like one of the lots and one of the lines went through the restaurant area. I was reading, I might have been reading it incorrectly, but it looked like that. So clear lines of the parcels, what they're going to be like. So then we know exactly, okay, this is how many home. This is how many rest, occupied units, residences, the rentals, how many slips? And any other changes like that. Is that what you're getting at, Terry? So it's.
I think, yeah. At our last meeting, I articulated about a dozen things that we needed. And one of them is an engineered drawing that clearly shows lot lines, setbacks, how many docks, how many, or excuse me, how many slips there's going to be, how many buoys there's going to be, moorings, you're going to have.
It's coming up, it's ahead in the presentation.
For me?
It's coming up in the presentation, but I'm not sure if we need to proceed.
Why don't you come and show it?
So I think we're.
If you have it ready.
Are there any other questions? Before we move on, I will do a couple more. And then if you have those in there, because that keeps coming up, then we'll go back to that. So sir, and then.
Thirty-nine eighty-one Westlake Road. And again, the information may be coming up.
Can you say that one more time?
Brian Weiser, thirty-nine eighty-one Westlake Road. The concern I have is absent that information, which may be forthcoming. And to echo Kathy Foster's statements, on weekends today with the existing boats that are there, by the way, we're about six houses down south of the marina today. The boat traffic is such that it, it's a grave concern both from a safety perspective, for our grandchildren, and also quality of life. and also quality of life perspective. On weekends, especially when the water level is slightly high, we get splashed so much because boats go by so fast, so close, that we can't even sit out there sometimes. So, again, absent more information, I have serious concerns about what will happen going forward. And really, really curious about how the proposal would mitigate that and improve that situation going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, because we've got a lot of people on the line. You don't have to say your name and address again.
Just really quick. Um, I've heard a lot about the walking, biking, whatever line, lane on the east side of County Road 16 that's proposed with no boat parking. I haven't heard that parking of trailers and boats would be banned on the west side. So, I'd like to know that for sure. And the other thing that I wanted to add when I was talking about seriously considering tier three is if you're looking at the uses, the marina is seasonal. The restaurant will be year round and the Airbnb places will be year round. And not only do they take up a greater amount of the lot coverage, but they're time wise, they're, they're year round where the marina is not.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. All right. So, Peter, do you want to come up and finish that up? Yeah, traffic patterns, one of the questions that we asked in the last one. And. Do you use the microphone too, just to?
You can pull it right out.
Um, I don't know where I had, I had little lines in here. And maybe I put it on the wrong drawing or didn't save it or something. So, these are drawings with the lot lines. The red is the lot lines and then the setbacks. And then the, there'll be, again, there'll be three lots. So, there'll be 45 in between each one of these. Uh, I'm sorry, 45 and 45 is 90, 45 and 45 is 90, and then 45 on this end. So, the existing dock, gas dock is here. And again, I did have arrows. So, the gas traffic pattern would come in like this and circle around. And the, the beauty of that, for those of you that are concerned, is today, traffic just comes like this, right across like that. And they're going to be, can you, I don't know if you can see that. They're going to be kind of in this way and then pushed out that way. So, if they did go north or south from there, they'd have to go like that and then kind of back into your house. That makes sense. Or do you, let's understand what I'm suggesting.
Can't hear. Can't hear. Let's go to the presentation.
Again, the majority of these boats are here already today, right? They're coming from up on the hill. Yes, there are new boats, but there's, the gas dock people are already coming there today. Because if they're not, they're not going to be more people coming for gas because of this proposal or less people. Frankly, I think there might be less people because it's not as easy. People love coming to the marina because it is so easy in and out. So, this is a little more challenging than it is today. But I do think that it funnels traffic out into the lake. Next slide, please. Um, one of the questions was how many rental units will they be and how big will they be? There'll be seven rental units, six of them at 2,500 square feet and one of them at 3,700 square feet. Oh, I forgot to add, there'll be, the number of bedrooms was asked. There'll be five and six bedroom units. These are the proposed lot lines. This application has already been submitted. Excuse me, I think somebody asked about it going through the restaurant. So, the lot line does cut around the restaurant. And it is 764 feet. Somebody asked, what is, it is not 864 feet. It is 764. Next slide, please. Another question from the last meeting was, what's going to happen at North Road Facility? So, the current service building that's on the lake at German Brothers that will move to the North Street Facility, which is across from the ice rink today. And again, all that service work will move to this facility. So, this is North Road here. There'll be, kind of on day one, if you will, would be this primary, would be service here. And then eventually a small showroom on the front of that. And way down the line, perhaps some storage buildings. But there's no, I would think 10 years at least for storage buildings to be back there. But primarily, it's going to be just this small building. There will be some trailer storage like there is now. That would be pushed further back. Any questions about the North Street Facility?
I actually have a question. What's the intent for winter storage for the boats that are docked?
They would, we have existing leases today at, one of them is at the Ontario County Fairgrounds.
So, you have a.
Right, those would continue and the other ones are in Rochester.
Because they're currently stored on West Lake Road, right?
Very few, like 15 boats are stored on West Lake Road. And those would be outdoor storage. And of the hundreds that we store, 15 of them ish. So, they would maybe be here shrunk wrapped in the back.
So, there's no intent on any winter storage on West Lake Road once this gets going?
Correct.
Thank you.
It's, it's more, right, it's less pond and more swimming pool-ish. So, it'll, it'll be cement and it'll, if you can imagine, just a half a pool that's cut on an angle, so you can back down into this thing. And it would be filtered with, literally with regular pool filters, but multiple pool filters. So, then we can water test the boats right at that facility. You caught me. That's not on here. So, that would be, it's an outdoor thing. So, that would probably be in here. Next slide, please. Um, two items that I didn't address from the last meeting. John, you had asked for accessible boating. I need to do a little bit more research on that. I, I haven't had any requests at the moment for accessible boating, but my last business that I owned was, as you know, was all about wheelchair lifts and wheelchair ramps. So, it's some population that I'm very sensitive towards. I would love it if we could do that. I started to think about, so it would have to be either a current boat owner or a boat renter. So, I thought about a boat renter. And unfortunately, the platoon boats that you probably know, right? They don't easily accommodate for door width for a wheelchair. So, we'd have to think about a way to, and there are certainly lifts to get them into the boat. So, we have to work on that.
That one was only an idea for your consideration.
Okay, but I did want to address it. And RSM drainage, so that would be the up, uphill. I got to get a little smarter on that. And we have opened the conversation with RSM to talk about their timeline. But I, I need a little more information from them. So, these are the frequently asked questions that I get when I kind of tell people what, what I'm up to. At the gas dock, the first question is, we still sell gas? Yes, we'll still sell gas. Where's everyone going to park? I mentioned this already. This number here, 17 dry stores out on that day, which again was the busiest day, one of the busiest days of the year. Of those dry stores that there are almost 70 up on the hill, 17 of them were out. So, it's about 25% of the dry stores that we have are used on a really busy day. What will the restaurant be like? It's, I use the term approachable. The other sentence I like to use is the sandbar, which is gorgeous, is boat shoes and golf shirts. And this will be flip flops and t-shirts. It'll be comfortable. It's intended for people to come in off their boat with their dog, with their kids and relax and have fun. It'll be, I think, relaxed atmosphere. And everybody loves that. Everyone says, will there be blue whales and it will be like the boathouse? That's what they want and that's, that's my intention. Will it be open all year? I guess TBD. There are a ton of, you guys know, there are a ton of vendors that are up and down or contractors going up and down in West Lake. So, I would love it if that was the case. And I would love it if it was a, a comfortable neighborhood place to go watch Monday Night Football throughout the winter. That would be, well, that would be my dream for what it would be like, the kind of place. Is a large vacant parcel to the south part of the project? We said no. Will it increase traffic on West Lake Road? I did discuss how there's going to be significantly less boats and trailers on the road. One of the questions briefly, part of the plan is for the west side of the road to not have boats and trailers. But there would be possibly customer vehicles. And how will it affect the environment? We talked about the, the storage tanks, getting all those boats serviced offsite, I think will be dramatically better for the lake. Or next slide, please, I think is the timeline. So, when might it all happen? This is, as I understand it, the, this portion could take months at the town level. And then once the town, if they did approve it, then I have to go to DEC and that takes five to six months. So, you're, if you roughly sketch that out, that would be kind of spring of '24. And I can't start putting docks in in the spring of '24. So, then it wouldn't probably go until the winter of '24, '25. So, the docks would be available in the spring of '25. And that's kind of what this initial timeline does, starts. Moving the service center offsite would happen pretty quickly. Roadway and parking on the west side of the road, that would be once we can get the docks in, that would allow cars to park up on the hill. So, if you look at this timeline, this is July 24 would be approval of the docks. So, and then that would be installation, construction of the docks. So, that, it could be, that would be May of '25. This is a little, if, if they didn't go in all in one phase. Your construction of the lodges is certainly down the line. So, somebody asked a question about construction equipment. It's not going to all happen at once for a variety of reasons. So, it has to be staged. So, it would be, I think, not, certainly the equipment wouldn't be on the road. But that's the general rough timeline.
Peter, the vertical bars, just for quick. They represent summer.
Okay, those are the, the summer, the summer periods there.
Are you going to be able to supply this to the town, this presentation, so we can look at it a little closer?
It, Doug has it now.
Okay, good.
And that's it.
Any other questions from anyone in attendance?
I'd just say.
Yes. Here, you can take it over to her. You get, you get delivery.
Get quality service.
I would, I would just like, I live around the corner from German Brothers. I go past German Brothers twice a day, every day of the year. I think number one, it's, it's a beautiful plan on paper, but I think you'll have a hard time training people not to park on the road. They've been doing this. I've lived there 50 years. They've been doing this for 50 years. Same people parking on the road every single day of the summer. And I went by there on Labor Day weekend and I counted 64 cars parked along the side of the road. So, I want to remind the town board that not everyone in the town of Canandaigua owns a boat. And not everyone in the town of Canandaigua wants to live on the lake. And not everyone on the town of, in the town of Canandaigua wants to live their life on the lake. There are a few of you, some of them. One person is right, sitting right here, who lives on the lake. And honestly, I see him on his porch very seldom. And I've never seen him on his dock. So, I've had, I've had a boat, I've had a boathouse, I've had access to property on the lake. I don't need it anymore. What I do need is to see the lake every single day that I live here. And I made a promise to myself, I would take a ride along the lake every single day of my life. And I do. Now, I do it because I have to. I used to do it because I wanted to and I still want to. So, while honestly, I really admire your plan. As a businessperson for many years and long involved in economic development, I know that a businessman can put a price on the benefit to him as well as the price on the benefit to the town. And you can do it in, well, you know, it's going to create X number of jobs at X number of dollars per job. It's going to create X number of more, more moorings at X number of dollars per mooring. That's going to be a benefit to me. I don't want, need to know what your profit margin is. I need to, they would need to know what the cost benefit is going to be to you. And as a businessperson, you should be able to do that, especially if you're looking for an incentive from the town of Canandaigua. You're looking to give the town an incentive, but you're looking for an incentive from them also. And we are the town of Canandaigua. And you need to listen to everybody.
Thank you.
There were, there were two questions, just to share. I think one was a comment, one was a question, but they were the same thing, asking if the boat launch was going to be open to the public as a result of this, the current private boat launch at German Brothers. And a comment, I heard two comments tonight about subdivision. I just want to clarify, they have not requested subdivision because they currently own three parcels and they're just submitted today. I mean, the, the comment was made that the proposals or the lot line adjustments have been submitted. So, that just happened today. We've had a very, very busy day with meetings. We have not even looked at this. We will review this. We will do zoning law determinations. And if there's variances that are needed, that'll be called out in the, the zoning law determination. And then they'll have to choose whether or not they're going to go through that process. If there's not, the zoning law determination would be available and the lot line adjustments would be completed. It's administrative. But just glancing at this, I don't want to predispose a zoning law determination, but I would definitely anticipate variances.
All right.
The answer is no to the question of, would it be a public ramp?
Yes. Yes, it's no. Yeah, because you had mentioned that before. A non-motorized public, a ramp for getting customers in and out, not. Let's go, Ben.
Sure, Kevin Olvany, Watershed Program Manager, 3726 Timberline Drive. I think things we have to think about in terms of the, the big picture on this project. One, it's a pre-existing non-conforming use. It's been there forever. There's a lot of good reasons to make it right in terms of what it actually is from a zoning code perspective. This is very much a discretionary decision by the town. You're also going to be not only taking potentially a pre-existing non-conforming use that's commercial, but you're also looking at the parcel to the south that was also purchased, that is residential, was residential and potentially grouping that into this incentive zoning. So, when you think about the lineal feeder shoreline and everything and potential changes to the zoning, you have to take into account, you're not only potentially looking at a non-conforming use, you had one that was a conforming use and looking at incentive zoning for that. And that's important when you start doing the numbers on the dock. And that's important when you start doing the numbers on the docking system. Lot line adjustment, I wasn't sure if it was gonna be a subdivision, but a lot line adjustment does make it more of an administrative aspect. But when you look at docks and moorings, we look at marinas and there's very few. I don't think, I can't think of one that we've actually looked at from an application standpoint. All the existing marinas, quite honestly, on the lake, when you look at docks and moorings are pretty much pre-existing non-conforming uses because of their, their density aspects. And part of the reason for the docks and moorings law was to not see this explosion of density all the way around the lake. When you look at the definition for, in the tier two, when you look at marinas, we look at them as facilities. We don't look them per se as parcels. They're considered facilities. This is a common plan of development. This is a facility, mixed uses, albeit. Tier two, in my opinion, does make probably the most sense, but I think there's gotta be more meat to the application to, to better understand that aspect. But we look at docks and moorings as a facility. And therefore, you need to look at the lineal feet of shoreline across it, instead of it as separate facilities. Are these gonna be three separate marinas? Are these gonna be three separate LLCs? How is this gonna be laid out from that perspective? Docks and moorings looks, looks at this as one common plan of development and one facility. And therefore, when you start doing the numbers, the allowable number of boat slips would be about ninety roughly and then fifteen moorings. I think the law could be looked at a couple of different ways, where maybe it's actually a better option to not have them as moorings because you're taking up less square footage, those fifteen moorings and make them boat slips. So there's some things to think about that way. But when you start looking at the numbers, you have to look at docks and moorings and you have to start thinking about this as one facility with different uses. And maybe one of the options would be to look at the restaurant as a separate facility and then the marina as its own facility and maybe look at the, the numbers from that perspective. But I just wanna put that out there, as you go down this, this track, you really have to think about, what are the allowances and, and what do they get by right? And what are you granting them in terms of these discretionary decisions? With that, appreciate the time.
All right, thank you. We have one online. Okay, go ahead. All right, Mr. Cook.
Yes, Lawrence Cook. I have a question. In the fall, all the boats go and use the, the launch ramp and are pulled out and travel down the West Lake Road to the north. And in the spring, if the service facilities moved up to the north, all the boats up in the north would have to come down and down the West Lake Road. Again, a lot of traffic and use the launch ramp to put them in. Is the marina going to use the public launch ramp like Sager's does and Marine Blue and some others? Or are they gonna have this same traffic pattern that's always been going down the West Lake Road and up the West Lake Road quite heavily in the spring and the fall?
Thank you. Did you got that? Did you, I don't know if you have an answer to that right now. I'll let you answer it if you have a chance.
I, I thought I addressed that it's, it's going to be significantly less boats going up and down West Lake Road because the, the boats, yes, some of them go down the ramp and into Canandaigua Lake. But probably half of the boats that we store are from other lakes. So that half of boats will never come down West Lake Road in the fall or the spring because they'll be serviced at the North Road Facility.
And the other, you, but you won't be using the public boat launch at all? You won't be accessing that?
I don't, I haven't thought that through. Frankly, it makes easier for me, right? It's probably saves, you know, a couple of minutes off every trip. So I can see the merits in that from an operational perspective, but I don't know if that's, would depend on the time of year because it gets pretty busy there. So, and especially if all the other guys are going in and out as well.
All right, thank you. Anyone else would like to be heard at this time? Any comments? Anybody else online? Do you see? Okay. All right, Ashley, I think you're up. If you could go ahead and give us your address.
Thank you. I'm at four zero nine four on Alinda Drive. So I can throw a stone and I hit German Brothers Marina. And so this, you know, like many of the speakers before, this directly impacts us. We all drive by two times a day. I'm a, I enjoy running, so I often run by German Brothers Marina and have to navigate the boats as they are right now. And so I wanted to share that I am so excited about this plan. I think it sounds really, really neat to clear to the, both the west and the east of the road of boats that right now are, you know, we make it work and it's fine. But I think it would be much, much better if that roadway were clear and much safer. It also is so exciting and I, I'm bummed to hear it's a couple of years away, but to have some lodging space. We have people from all over the country who come visit us. My in-laws come down regularly. And so to be able to stay somewhere close by, that would be super exciting. And then just having a restaurant option that is not, you know, twenty minutes into the city, twenty minutes back, to have something right there that almost would be walkable is, I just think, super exciting. I wanna thank German Brothers for thinking through this stuff. I wanna thank them for thinking about a public option for accessing the lake. You guys have heard me talk before when we were thinking about the RSM project last year, Titcher Point, you know, whatever that was two years ago. And it's just, it's another great opportunity, you know, when we think about the strategic plan for the town of Canandaigua, one of the main focal points of that plan is increasing public access to the lake. And I think this is just another example of a project that does that and we're so excited to support it. That's what I have. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much. Okay, give the room one more scan. If you see any over there that need comments, give me a shout. So I can't read that part away. Any other comments? Okay, anything from the board?
More thing, I know this is the definition of hearsay, but I have spoken to a number of very close neighbors and I'm most interested in what they have to say. And these people that live two and three doors down, one as recently as today, super excited. One that lives like a stone's throw in the back corner, literally high-fived. So there, there's tremendous excitement for what we're proposing.
Thank you very much. All right, so before we, we are not going to close the public hearing because we are obviously awaiting more information. The project and the plans to go through and be approved. So when would be, when do you think would be an appropriate time based on the plans coming in? Time to review, to re-continue it too. I don't wanna have this every month because now that I don't, we don't love seeing all of you, because then it turns into just kind of a rehash of everything every month and that's not productive. So. Will that give enough time to have, have more information?
If they need variances for that, then they have to make a decision, you know, so that's, we're gonna have to have communication.
Okay. November or December? I should continue it to another date. So November, December, which one do you think? Would December give more time? Is November too soon? So we will continue and I am gonna address some of the other questions quickly. But so for our planning purposes, that would be November twentieth. Okay, so we will not close the public hearing, but we will continue it to November twentieth. Peter, do you have that on your calendar? So you can kind of gear towards, towards that to move forward. Now, as far as the process, just to clarify again, it kind of is everybody gathered from this. It's not gonna be a simple cut and dry process as we go through this discussion. There's a lot of give and take. This doesn't happen very often. It's once in, how many years? Fifteen years that you've been on the board and it's happened? So it's not something that happens a lot, but it's something that we will be going through and doing very deliberately. So the next step will be to see what comes in as the application continues. As we have the information as far as what is being requested for us to provide and then the negotiation, if it's approved of any sort of amenity that the town would request or require, that would be given back to the town in exchange for granting this change in tier, this change in usage. Timeline. It's gonna take several months to go through this process because once the application goes through and as the application's approved and we have everything kind of ironed out, know what it's gonna look like, then that's when we have the discussions of, okay, what are we going to request? And if that's agreeable to the applicant. And then it's, it's really a barter, it's an open discussion back and forth. That will all be held during public meetings. That will all be held during open sessions like this. If at the end of the day, we grant incentive zoning, if we say yes, we approve this, we accept your amenities, we will give you these incentives in exchange for those amenities, then the process would go to the planning board. The planning board would go through all of their steps and there would be back and forth with the planning board as the project goes through. Okay, so it is a lengthy process. It's not something that's gonna be done in a couple of months. It's not something that's gonna be done just like that. And there are multiple checks along the way. There are multiple opportunities for those in favor of it, those against it to be heard. And then ultimately, once the board decides yes or no, if we decide no, then it's the end. If we decide yes and we grant it, then it goes to the planning board for their next stage and their next step, just like any other project we go through. Okay, so that's, that's the process. It's not neat and tidy. It does take time. Okay, all right. So with that, I will not close the hearing, but I will adjourn tonight's public hearing to be continued on November twentieth. And I have a feeling that most of you were here for the public hearing, so we will not, our feelings will not be hurt if you decide to enjoy the rest of your evening. Thank you.